Okay, welcome everyone. I think it's time to get started. Mr. Moffett?
I'll read the statement of compliance. This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Publics Meeting Act. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on April 11th, 2015, and April 12th, 2015. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that this meeting is in violation of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be rebroadcast by the Board at a later date on cable television Channel 77 and Fios Channel 46. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during course of the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business. Thank you, and please rise for the salute to the flag.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So we'll now start with the recognition. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Moffett, the roll call.
Sure. Ms. Angley?
Here.
Mr. Biancamano?
Present.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Dr. Gold?
Here.
Mr. Cluffell?
Here.
Ms. Mitchell?
Here.
Ms. Soboloff?
Here.
And Ms. Ty Roller?
Here.
And now, we'll move on to the recognition portion of our meeting.
Good evening, Madam President and fellow Board members. It's my pleasure this evening to present the Students of the Month, starting with the Brand School. Our first student is Alexandra Barrington. Alexandra's overall attitude towards school has been remarkable. She is always willing to include others in free choice activities and uses kind words. Her academic performance has become exemplary, and her handwriting and penmanship is honorable. Please join me in congratulating Alexandra. Our next student is a fourth grader from Calabro, Vincenza Cancela. Vincenza is a positive role model in and out of the classroom. She demonstrates great value towards learning and school responsibilities. Vincenza is a loyal friend and treats others, treats her peers and everyone around her with kindness and respect. Her teachers have been very impressed by the growth and maturity that Vincenza has shown. Vincenza displays all the characteristics which make her an excellent choice to represent Calabro School as the March Student of the Month. Please join me in congratulating Vincenza. Our next student is from Connors Elementary School, sixth grader, Tassiana Kisan. Tassiana transferred to Connors this year. Right away, she fit in well with her peers and was viewed as a friend by all the girls in her class. As a teacher, it is wonderful to see how hard Tassiana tries every day. She gives 110% to each of her classes and doesn't give up even when a topic is challenging. Tassiana participated in the Park After School tutoring program. No matter what, she continued to give maximum effort through the entire program and has progressed tremendously throughout the year. Our next student is from Wallace Elementary School, kindergarten student, Ava Chiracella. Ava is a great student, good friend, and a cooperative student. Ava works extremely hard on all of her assignments to make sure that they are done correctly. Her homework is always complete, and she reads at home every night. In February, Ava read 501 minutes at home. Ava's attendance is excellent. She rarely misses a day of school. Ava is a pleasure to have in class. The progress that she has made this year is wonderful, and we are so happy that she is the Student of the Month. Please join me in congratulating Ava. Our next student is from the Hoboken Junior High School, eighth grader, Sophia Ortiz. Sophia is a very quiet and shy young lady. However, this does not stop her from doing all her work above and beyond of what is expected of her. She is an outstanding student. If she cannot be the star, she will definitely help in some other possible area as she exhibited in her backstage work in all of the school plays. She's always there to help, explain, and cheer on her fellow classmates. Please join me in congratulating Sophia. And last but not least, our High School Student of the Month, grade 11, Linda Rosado. Linda is a great classroom leader who takes...
Is she here?
Yeah.
Oh, she is here.
Linda is a great... Face this way. That's okay. You're good now? Okay. Linda is a great classroom leader who takes pride in her work. She's always kind and respectful to her peers. Linda is very cooperative, respectful, thoughtful, reliable, and hardworking student who strives hard to learn concepts. Linda is punctual and responsible. She demonstrates kindness and caring for fellow students and recently completed the Safe Sitter Babysitting Training Program with Flying Colors. All her instructors were impressed with her dedication in the program. Continuing with our recognition program, we have a special presentation by the advisors of the Harvard Model Congress. This time, I'd like to call up Mr. Huggins and Mr. Di Bernardo.
Good evening. My name is Mr. Di Bernardo, and I'm a science teacher in Hoboken Junior Senior High School. To my right is Mr. Huggins, who is the English teacher at Hoboken Junior Senior High School. And today, we're here to talk to you about Harvard Model Congress. And as you may know, Harvard Model Congress, it's one of the country's premier academic government simulation programs. The goal of the program is to educate young, promising high school students in the power and the process of American government while inspiring them to seek lives of public service and civic engagement. The conference simulates the passage of about four days of United States government in real time, and it culminates in the president signing or vetoing bills during the final The culmination of Harvard Model Congress, it also parallels in somewhat of a major sporting event like the Super Bowl, where students come together at a national summit to exchange ideas, to make major decisions, as legislators do today. Harvard Model Congress also provides invaluable preparation for university-level academics, and I feel that's one of the most important aspects of this program. Opportunities to grow socially as they meet over 500 students from around the country and they interact with them. And essential real-world situations, it sharpens the students' life skills. Personally, I feel also that one of the most impactful aspects of this program is the academic relationships that these students build with the students of Harvard University. And those academic relationships can continue as, you know, they make friends on Facebook and keep in touch with each other. And I say those are very valuable networking relationships that might help you out in the future. So this is a program that really continues on after they leave the program as well. So at this time, I'd like to bring three select delegates who participated in the program just to make short comments on what they feel, how they feel the program's impacted them.
Hello. My name is Alfredo Velosi, and I was a part of Harvard Model Congress this year, and I'm proud. I'm fortunate enough to go every year on the program. I served in the Supreme Court this year, and that was a wonderful experience. It taught me a lot about how the U.S. government and politics work. And the program itself just inspires me to get better grades and aspire to the Harvard Model Congress students, like the Harvard students. And it's very important in my personal and academic life, and this is Ray Post.
Hi, I'm Ray Post. This year in HMC, I served in the Foreign Affairs Committee, where I learned a lot about U.S. foreign policy. Not only do you meet a lot of people on HMC, but it also helps with group work as you're working with like over 50-plus people in full session and in committee. And Jada Sintra.
Hi, I'm Jada Sintra. I served in the Foreign Affairs Committee this year with Ray. And I believe that Harvard Model Congress is an academic club. It helps you keep your grades up because it's not a club that just anybody can get into. I was fortunate enough to go to San Francisco twice, last year and this year, and I had to keep my grades up. And I learned more about speaking publicly and gaining the confidence to stand in front of people and state my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes our recognition program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll proceed with the reports, administration.
Okay. First of all, I'd just like to say we're very proud of the Model Congress participants and as we are of all of our Students of the Month, who are presented each month by Dr. Hernandez. So thank you very much for all the hard work that you do. And again, we're very proud that the Model Congress was able to take place this year. So thank you. I do have one little report to make tonight, and it concerns an erasure irregularity that was conducted by the State Department. Each year, there are several districts statewide who are scrutinized because of the potential of erasure irregularities on standardized tests. And we go back to Calabro in the year 2012. And I'm happy to say that the investigation found no real irregularities and no punitive actions necessary. But we do have a corrective action plan because what was found was that one of the teachers was prompting kids to check your work, make sure you have the right thing going on, be careful, check your work. She didn't directly give answers, but she was not allowed to talk during that period of time. So we wrote a corrective action plan on that. And in the process of the investigation, we also found that there were publicly 504 children mixed in and shouldn't have been receiving the same kind of accommodations. So we'll take care of that as well. So we have a corrective action plan that we'll submit to the State Department. And once again, I'm happy to say, no punitive action, nothing going on. It was totally an innocent thing on the part of the teacher. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moffett?
Just one quick item. Our district budget has been received by the Hudson County Office. It is under review, not only at the county office level, but also in Trenton. We have some answers that we provided them, points of clarification. So we expect them to continue that review. And once it's approved, we'll be providing some additional information on our website and to the Board on the specific information that's approved and can be advertised. So that's the one item I have.
Thank you. Now we'll have our committee reports. Dr. Gold?
Okay. Finance. In finance, we discussed three things. The first is the upcoming budget, the constraints we have. And we also talked about what's going to happen the year after next. We talked about literally the constraints and the issues problems we're going to have. And the budget's going to have a real problem. And I think people have to be aware of that, and including the staff also. The other thing we talked about was that a school board member retained a $450-an-hour lawyer to represent him in an ethics case. I'm sure we'll be discussing the appropriateness of this action, given the financial constraints that we're suffering under. And the third thing is that I believe the Board will approve an appeal of the Board of Education, of the Department of Education's granting of the extension. There's a number of reasons that it should not, in my opinion, shouldn't have gone this far, but I think that we should appeal it, or that's what we're going to vote on. But the school cannot afford to pay for an appeal. So what we're, if this is approved, we're going to solicit individual donations from met people, and we're going to use these individual donations to fund the appeal. So while the appeal, if it does take place, and I assume it will, it will not be funded with school board budget money. It will be funded with money that is donated to the school for that purpose. So that's the finance report.
Thank you. Ms. Evans?
The Governance and Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, April 1st, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. In attendance were Dr. Brakel, myself, Mr. Gagliardi, Dr. Hernandez, Ms. Stromwall, Ms. Soboloff, and Ms. Ty Roller. The committee was updated by Mr. Gagliardi on pending legal matters. He also answered questions from committee members regarding legal issues. The committee discussed personnel matters. The committee also reviewed all agenda items for governance and personnel and recommends all for approval by the Board. There are a few in particular I'd like to note. We have three retirements on the agenda. Isabella Delafave, Patricia Williams, and Diane Body. We thank all three for their years of service to the district and wish them all the best in their retirement. I'd also like to extend thanks to a few groups for their support of the district students with the upcoming events. Planning for Adult Life will work with special education students at the high school to complete activities to identify strengths and challenges and set goals for adult life in seven core areas. Jersey Cares volunteers will give a fresh coat of paint to the Wallace School's restrooms, four stairwells, and also complete painting and mural in the cafeteria. Stevens Institute of Technology is hosting the first Demathon on June 2nd. This is for all sixth-grade students in Hoboken. It will be a day of fun and learning about science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. This is actually not on the agenda because it's a walking field trip, but I did want to make sure that we thanked Stevens for this event that they're sponsoring. And finally, as Dr. Gold mentioned, the appeal of the Ola expansion is on the agenda. This appeal is due to the failure by the Department of Education to consider accurate student census data, as well as the socioeconomic and financial impact of continued expansion on the Hoboken public schools. As Dr. Gold noted and the resolution also notes, this appeal will be funded not by taxpayer dollars, but by private donations to the Board. That's my report.
Thank you. Mr. Biancamano?
Sure. Just a small update this month. I know that's abnormal of me, but we actually didn't have a Facilities Committee meeting last month. So just three quick updates. Ms. Evans, you touched upon Jersey Cares painting, the school's restrooms and things like that. That's something that we did talk about in committee earlier this year, and I'm glad to see it on the agenda, something coming to fruition. The second thing is, Ms. Soboloff, you had emailed me as the Chair of the Facilities regarding receptacles in the girls' bathroom at the high school. I could tell you that Mr. Callagie has ordered those, and they are on their way in. So that's another accomplishment there. And the final thing that I want to touch upon is one of my favorite subjects, and that's the scaffolding at Brand School. There is a positive update on that. I did speak to Mr. Callagie about that. We did have a little bit of a hurdle where our lowest bidder was being challenged by our third lowest bidder. But our attorney, I believe, Ms. Fabian, did tell us that we should proceed with the lowest bidder, which is fantastic for the district. So right now, it is back down in Trenton, and we're waiting for approval of that bid, which should be relatively quick. And we should have a resolution on the May agenda regarding that bid, approving that bid, that is. And work will begin up to 30 days immediately. So I keep saying this, but I'm pretty sure that it's the beginning of the end of the scaffolding at Brand School. So I know that the neighbors would be happy in their neighborhood, and it's something that I will continue to fight until it is completely down. And the good news, the best news that Mr. Callagie had made this afternoon was, it seems that 100% of it will be, of the funding to keep it up, of the cost to keep it up, that is, will be reimbursed to this district. So kudos to the Facilities Office, and we'll continue to fight to make sure that it comes down, and more importantly, that we fix the facade at Brand. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Ms. Soboloff?
The Athletics and Performing Arts Committee met on April 1st. In attendance was myself, Dr. Hernandez, Ms. Ty Roller, and Ms. Evans. Oh, sorry. Under athletics, it was kind of a nice, long meeting, so I have a lot to report, so bear with me. Stevens Institute is hosting the National NCAA III Volleyball Championship on April 24th. They've reached out to the district to have some of our students attend. Floras will go home with that information. Volleyball, there's been a great growth, excuse me, in the district, in girls' volleyball. So we were planning a new team will be added for that. There has been great interest in the community in the sport of wrestling, and The Edge, which is down on Observatory Highway, has offered to donate mats and volunteer coaches to explore an intramural wrestling program at the high school next winter season. The athletic programs were also discussed as part of the PhysEd curriculum. And just kind of because I thought it was interesting to note that through the PhysEd, the students are exposed to soccer, volleyball, football, lacrosse, handball, golf, track, swimming, water polo, water basketball, CrossFit, yoga, and dance, among many other things. Participation numbers were discussed. Student-athlete participations are as follows: baseball, 36 student-athletes, softball, 29, and outdoor track, 28. The Hoboken High Track Team will be participating in the prestigious Penn Relays at the end of April and have been fundraising to defray the cost of hotels and meals. The Track Team would like to thank the following people for their help in this effort. The Hoboken Harriers, $285. The Hoboken Junior-Senior High School PTO, Wallace PTO, and Hoboken Special Needs Parent Group, $1,000 for their family track and field day. And Theresa Minutilo and Friends, $1,600. So good luck to the team in that event. And for Performing Arts, they had a very exciting showing at the Thespian Awards. The New Jersey Thespian competition is a two-day event. It's a statewide event, 35 high schools with over 1,000 students. And in all categories except one, students who receive 95 or 100 in their category get an accomplished. So Hoboken High received six accomplished awards in those categories. And the other major event, that's a separate event, is a one-act play. And the Hoboken High School Theater 2 class works on creating a one-act play, which they take down to the competition. And overall statewide, they came in second place, which I think is really terrific. Special congratulations to Gina Rotundi, Alison Feinstein, Ayesha Tapia, Brittany Cologne, and Jason Oliviers for this accomplishment. And Jason also won first place overall in the state for Best Supportive Actor overall. The event also allows students to participate in early college auditions, and junior Ellie Feinstein was offered a $25,000 scholarship to Rowan University if she chooses to attend their theater program. Theater and band camp were discussed. Summer theater and band camp were discussed, and those camps will meet three times a week through the end of June to the end of July. Information will be going home about that. And the Drama Club will hold a family movie night featuring Shrek the Musical Movie on Friday, April 17th. Dinner at 5:00, movie at 6:00. So thanks very much, and congratulations to the Thespian Awards.
Yeah, and I think we should have a round of applause for our... And that is for our citizens that donated and our school organizations that helped with raising money for Penn Relays and also for the successes of our students. So just a quick report from me. First, I wanted to just mention that we had a very nice event up at Stevens this month or past month, the end of March. And it was a celebration honoring our children that participated in the SAT MAX program, which is a program given by Stevens to children in the high school to improve their scores. And it was a really wonderful celebration, and I think probably what the best of it was to see how much value this program had, not in just the fact that their scores will go up, but also what they got out of interacting with the Stevens faculty, as well as the Stevens student tutors. So it was a, and it was lovely that Stevens gave an event for the children and their parents to come and our high school administration. So thank you, Stevens. You do some nice things for the community, and this is another one of them. I'd like you to just take a note for those that have picked up the agendas we're actually doing and different, slightly different agenda order tonight. We are actually separating out the appointment of our new superintendent as a singular agenda item first. So we actually have three comments. The first, which is just on that appointment, the second, which is on the other agenda items, and the third, which is the end of the meeting, overall public comments. So the first is just on the superintendent. I'm going to request, since it's only one item, that people try to keep their remarks to a quick one minute, then we'll go into that vote, and we can proceed. Then the next is the agenda comments only. That's on the agenda items. We're going to see how many people want to do that, to see what we're going to do there. And then, of course, last, the public comments that are at the very end of the meeting. So I just wanted to alert everyone that that's why there were the three boards. So now we'll just have quick committee comments from Board Trustees. Sharon? No? Mr. Biancamano?
Yes. I have some questions. Since they were brought up in committee reports, Mr. Gold and Ms. Evans brought it up regarding the Ola appeal. Is this the appropriate time to ask those? Madam President, I'm pretty sure, since it is, they were brought up in committee, correct?
Yeah, well, do you want to, if you want to discuss the agenda item, we can do that when we pull it from the agenda, whenever, I think that might be the better place to do it. Is that okay?
That's why I was asking.
Yeah, that's, we'll definitely have time to discuss it. On any other reports? Ms. Mitchell?
Just regarding the facilities, are you going to hold a meeting next month?
Mr. Callagie and I are planning to hold a meeting, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ms. Soboloff? Dr. Gold? Ms. Evans? Mr. Cluffell? Okay, so now we are going to move on to the public comment on the superintendent agenda item only. Again, because this is just a comment on one item, I just would like to request that you keep it brief. I think for one item, a minute will do.
We have one speaker signed up for President's 51st appointment.
Okay.
And it's Ms. Patricia Waiters.
And Ms. Waiters, since you're the only one, obviously, we'll let you have your five minutes.
Patricia Waiters, 1233 Park Avenue. With the superintendent search, it's a question, but you can answer me when I'm finished. With the superintendent search, it's a question, but you're going to answer me when I finish in its entirety. The last superintendent search, you opened it up to the public, and you respected our input and our opinions. This time, they didn't do that. I came here myself two or three times, and seeing you guys in closed session discussing the superintendent. Today, seeing another name on agenda, I don't know this particular individual, but I'm going to be honest, that this is like a smack in the face to me and a few other people that was hoping that we have a superintendent that we already have in place that's doing an excellent, extraordinary, outstanding, superb job, Mr. Hernandez. It kind of bothers me when you say it's not politics, but I refrain from standing here because I can't say other than that to give somebody a five-year contract that we know absolutely nothing about. It's very disturbing, five years, when half, when six seats is up in six months. So to vote on somebody, you might not even be sitting on that stage in six months, and to give them a five-year contract, that's a little steep. And all we hear, we seen they're going to have property taxes raised and everything with the Board of Ed. To offer somebody this type of money, and the new people come, and we not comfortable with her, five years, you still have to pay her. I don't think this was right. I think sometimes change is good, but sometimes leave well enough alone. Mr. Hernandez served anyway, his actions served as a superintendent anyway. He's been here three years. We know what he do. He doing a wonderful job. I can understand still why the public couldn't have an input on this. When I went to the one at the Board of Ed, me and a few other people, and it's sad, the people were so frustrated, they don't even want to come out. So whoever this individual is, it's not going to be easy. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to be very challenging when it come down to the school system, because it's like we losing our school system. It's not fair. This is my personal opinion. I'm very involved in the school system. Seven years, like I told you, running, never get frustrated when I lose, I just stay involved and become more aware of what's going on. And to take a known disregard to the people that live here, and our school is in this school system, this is another smack in the face. I'm sorry, Dr. Hernandez. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waiters.
Madam President, Mr. Enrico is motioning from the floor.
How are we doing this evening? I'd like to welcome the new superintendent, Christine Johnson, here. As far as the association is concerned, we have some officers here tonight, and as I stated, I think this is our 11th superintendent during my career, so I think it may be more than that. But from the association side, as I said to Dr. Brockell, anyhow, we're looking to work, look forward to working with you, and we just keep an open dialogue, and we're here for the children of Hoboken, both sides, and I think if we focus on that, we will definitely be successful. So I welcome you aboard.
So now we are going to call the vote, and of course, comment with the vote. Mr. Moffett?
Coral. Do I have to move the... Yes.
Do I have a motion?
Can I, I'll move Jenna Allen, 5.01.
I'll second.
Evans?
Coral.
Yes, please.
Ms. Angley?
Yes, and we're thrilled you're here and looking forward to working with you.
Mr. Biancomano?
I have a prepared statement that I would like to read for the record, and Dr. Johnson, I have to excuse myself first, I wasn't aware you were going to be here tonight, so it was directed as you weren't going to be here tonight. Tonight, as members of the Board of Education, we vote on the next educational leader of our district. This is the most important decision we make as board members. While interviewing each candidate, I wanted to make sure our community as a whole was represented fairly, and I must stress, what I'm going to read is my opinion. I would like to begin with our district teachers, administrators, and staff. I felt it was very important that our selection brought some stability to our district. I know there's been some cynicism with the revolving door of administrators in this district. I wanted to make sure we had a longer commitment in the amount of years from whoever our choice was going to be. On average, New Jersey school superintendents serve three years. After serving the Booton School District for seven years, Dr. Johnson has agreed to stay five years in Hoboken. To the Hoboken residents and taxpayers, with this year's budget increasing school taxes 4% again, and 12% over the last three years, it was vitally important to me we had a superintendent who could provide the best education for our students while being cautious of the tax burden on our residents. Dr. Johnson provided this in Booton by giving the right to their residents to publicly vote on school referendums, something that is very, very important to me. One personal quality that I looked for was fairness. I believe Dr. Johnson has shown that she will be respectful to all opinions and all segments of the community as well. She made a commitment that no information will be withheld from a specific board member over another. I also feel as if I need to address charter parents as well, as members and taxpayers of this community. With the divisive nature of the lawsuit against one of the charter schools in our city, it was important to get each candidate's take on charter specifically. I felt, out of all of the candidates, Dr. Johnson was the most objective. During the interview process, she expressed the belief that the battle with any school should come from the classroom and not the courtroom, that we should challenge other schools academically and not legally. Finally, finally, and most importantly, I would like to speak to the students of this district. I want, and I believe that our students want, someone who will academically challenge them to be the best they can be. I wanted the person who leads the Hoboken schools to focus on our students' academic needs. Dr. Johnson has a long-term vision for our district and a plan to ensure the best quality education for all. So I hope that wasn't so much pressure, Dr. Johnson. It is with this, I will be supporting Dr. Christine Johnson as the next superintendent for the Hoboken Public School District. I.
Ms. Evans?
I am so excited that Christine Johnson will be the next superintendent for the Hoboken District Schools. I'm both excited both as a Board of Ed trustee and also as a district parent. I'm looking forward to working with her and to all that we can accomplish in the district with her leadership. I vote yes.
Dr. Gold?
For me, this is a very difficult vote. I'm concerned, and I'm not sure. I'm not sure if the situation, skills, and abilities that made Dr. Johnson a great superintendent in Booton will transfer well to Hoboken. I think she just saw an example of how her words could be twisted around. I'm not sure of what Dr. Johnson's initial ideas for improving the Hoboken school system, though in reality and in fairness, she set a real plan for the district will have to entail careful consideration of all the data and all the stakeholders. And I'm not sure that being a good listener, being a peacemaker, and being an arbiter is enough. To implement change in Hoboken, I think you have to be an ideologue. I think you have to challenge the beliefs and interests of the unions, of the administration, of the school board, of the elected officials, and actually, the entire population of Hoboken. The fact is, to be an effective supervisor, superintendent, you have to be able to risk your career, you have to risk your comfort, in ways you have to risk your sanity. Having said that, the rest of the school board seems to disagree with me. And in all fairness, they're, except for one person, they're more intimately related to the day-to-day functioning of the school district. So in the spirit of cooperation, good boardsmanship, and a fresh start, I'll say yes, and welcome Dr. Johnson as our next superintendent.
Mr. Kluftfeld?
Yes, without reservation.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes, and welcome, and I'm looking forward to working with you.
Ms. Sobolov?
In previous years, I had the honor to be, to participate in this process, and the rules have changed, and I was not able to participate this time, and that was unfortunate for me, but I know what a lot of hard work it was, I know what a lot of hard decisions had to be made, and all that went into all the different interviews, and so I was excited to meet Ms. Johnson here for the first time, too, and I say welcome. So I abstain, I have to abstain.
And Ms. Ty Roller?
First, I am just going to read a statement from Monica Stromwall, who couldn't be here this evening. Dear fellow trustees, administration, staff, and community members, although I could not be here tonight to vote for the selection of the superintendent, I've been very involved in the process and selection of the candidates. I am excited and eager to begin working with Ms. Johnson and look forward to a partnership with her. Her past experience, enthusiasm, and proven track record will only further the progress Hoboken School District has made. I look forward to her arrival this summer and can't wait for the upcoming school year. Congratulations, Ms. Johnson. And as I have spoken before, at probably a few meetings as we've approached this day, when I've discussed the search, the Board of Education truly performed this superintendent search as a unit. I'm very proud of the hard work and commitment of all the board members in making themselves available, working many nights, and working together to choose our next educational leader. It is with great pleasure that I welcome Christine Johnson to our district. As Mr. Enrico mentioned, it's a milestone, you are the first woman, but most important, I believe that you have the drive and commitment that is needed to lead our district forward. We did begin the process with a survey that surveyed parents and students, excuse me, parents, and community members, and teachers, and what was very interesting was a lot of the, it was very common desires, and I think the full board did an excellent job working hard to meet the expectations of our community, and also pick a leader that will do a great job for our students. So welcome, Ms. Johnson. And with that, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Johnson on her appointment. And I vote yes. And now I'd like to ask Ms. Johnson if she'd like to come up and say a few words.
All right. Good evening, everyone. It's a little, a new environment for me. I've been in a different environment for a few years. I am honored to be here this evening, Board of Education members, staff and administrators who are here, parents and community members. I can't begin to express my gratitude that I feel to become your next superintendent of schools. For the past seven years, a little over seven years, I dedicated myself to the Booton School District. I observed, and I listened, as Dr. Gold said, I did listen a lot in the Booton School District to learn the needs of the community, the needs of the students, and the needs of the staff, and parents as well, and guardians in the community. I learned a lot during that time about the importance of building community and maintaining community, more than just the word of what community means, but the actual process of building community. While you don't know me at this time, and there's probably a lot of contemplation about what I've done in the past, where I've been, and whether or not I'm a good fit for this community, I am very confident that quickly, you will learn that I am first and foremost a child advocate. I'm passionate about achieving equity and excellence for all kids. It doesn't matter what age the child is, it doesn't matter what the background of the child is. I'm passionate about using education and making sure that education is an equalizer for a community and for all children. I'm also a staunch advocate of teacher leadership and the development of leadership and building capacity among our teachers, our administrators, as well as our parents. I think that's very, very important, and I think that it's a unifying force in any community. I'm convinced that all voices in a community must be heard and considered. I think that's also critical. As a superintendent of schools, my first responsibility is to hear about the needs, and when I hear different opinions, and I hear opinions from the community members, I take that to heart. I understand, I try to understand what those comments are all about and what they mean, and I attempt to address them appropriately head-on. Sometimes it requires some courage and a little bit of thick skin, and sometimes it requires just a deeper level of understanding. Because of those things that I'm deeply committed to, child advocacy, leadership development, and also voices within the community for our parents, that's one of the reasons why I wanted to let the board know that any of my goals, particularly quantitative goals, will be dedicated to those three areas. As I work very diligently to achieve those goals, anything that goes along with those goals regarding compensation will be donated back to those three areas: professional development, student programs, and also the continued development and learning of all parents and community members, so for programming purposes. I will dedicate my time and my energies as if I were a taxpayer in this community. I'll be committed to the academic achievement as if every single student were my own. I will be a partner to this Board of Education, as I've been for the last seven years in Booton, and prior to that, in Mendham Township. I'll honor the union and the contracts that are made, as it's my duty to foster togetherness and team-building. I will work to make this community as proud of the Hoboken schools as possible, as proud as this community has ever been before. I understand it's going to take some time to build a level of confidence, and I understand that level of confidence may be here for some, and maybe here for others, and maybe even here for others, but with a little bit of time, I promise you that my dedication to, and my commitment to this school district will, in fact, change some of those opinions. I want to thank you for this opportunity to serve all of you, the Board of Education, the staff members, the community, and the kids, most importantly. I'll never take it for granted, I can promise you that, I can assure you of that, and I hope that we'll do spectacular things for kids each and every day in the school district. Thank you.
Thank you.
So now, we're just going to, can I have a motion to take a short 10-minute recess so that those who wish to could introduce themselves to Christine Johnson?
Motion. Second.
Second. Okay, 15-minute recess. Okay, Mr. Moffett, can you take the roll again, please?
Roll, come back, come back into session.
Yes, please.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Mr. Biancomano?
Present.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Dr. Gold?
Here.
Mr. Kluftfeld?
Here.
Ms. Mitchell?
Here.
Ms. Sobolov?
Here.
And Ms. Ty Roller?
Here. Okay, so now we're, Mr. Kluftfeld, are you looking over the list? Do you want to make a recommendation?
Well, we have, Mr. Moffett, I understand, we have conflicting board policies here. We have 15 people signed up to speak on the agenda items, but we have a policy that limits the public portion to 30 minutes for the agenda item and for the public portion later on.
Would you like to make a recommendation?
Well, I would say that we could split the difference, and if we limit it to three minutes each, everyone gets a chance to speak. That should be plenty of time, that goes to 42 minutes.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, would require a motion to extend.
Make a motion that we, people are allowed three minutes to speak.
And that would go to 42 minutes.
Okay, so Liam has the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so that's how we're going to do it. And we have to vote, I'm sorry.
And, Madam President, we're voting on changing the time limit from five minutes to three minutes?
To three minutes.
And to go beyond 30 minutes to approximately 42 minutes. Okay.
Okay.
Coral?
Coral.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Mr. Biancomano?
No.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Dr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Kluftfeld?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Sobolov?
Yes.
And Ms. Ty Roller?
Yes, and I appreciate the public's understanding. So can we have the first agenda item comment?
First speaker is Mr. Brian Murray.
Hi. Brian Murray, 1100 Maxwell Lane. Before I get to what I wanted to speak about, I'm just going to say that I, it's just brought to my attention that resignations on that list is Principal Roger Bowley for Wallace, where my kids go to school, and I beg of you guys not to accept his resignation, and do everything in your power to keep him. He is the single best... He is the single best thing that I've seen happen to the school district since I've been a part of it. And that doesn't take away from anybody else, but it talks about his determination and dedication to the students. I'm going to talk about the funding of the Ola lawsuit, which I wish Ms. Trauma were here, but I honestly believe that she is not here so she doesn't have to go on record voting, vote for or against it. Your job is about building community, just like the new superintendent who's coming in just talked about. You know, it's one thing to, we have major financial problems, just like Mr. Gold alluded to, and I know that essentially that this lawsuit is about the kids that we, as a district, continue to lose to the charter schools, and then what that means about funding and what that means about the overhead, and, you know, that we will have to come to some days of reckoning about the mismanagement of the budget, and that's what this is really about. But when you put this on the agenda, where there's going to be private individuals and groups that are funding, essentially doing your bidding, now, all of those donations are then going to be Oprah'd, and they're going to be, the individuals that pay into that are going to be public record. And now, for some of you, that might not be a problem, because you've come out on the record as divisive and that you really don't care about the charter school parents. But, you know, if there are other people that are going to be donating, you're really dividing parents, people who see each other at Little League games, people who see each other on the soccer fields and at dance recitals and everywhere else, people who live in the same building, parents of the same kids that grew up in the same daycares. And so, one parent gives $10 for what they don't really understand, and the next thing you know, their next-door neighbors aren't talking to them. So, try to think about the big picture when you go down that road, as to really what that means for the community and all the parents in the community. It's, you know, for you to go outside of the regular process, I'd rather you just say, "Okay, well, we're going to continue to fund it," even though we said we weren't going to. At least that would be more honest, and then the charter school community could then only hate, you know, seven or eight of you instead of dividing the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Next speaker, please.
Robert Cressby.
Mr. Cressby.
Robert Cressby, 901 Madison. A year and a half ago, I stood before you and implored that the Board of Ed would work with the community to move forward. I'm deeply, deeply disappointed that I'm here today having to talk about the continuation of the Ola lawsuit. After the Department of Education issued their letter last month, I had hoped that we could move forward as a community. I had hoped that we could talk about sharing effective teaching methods and other programs that would benefit our children. I had hoped that we could work together with the new superintendent to build community. I had hoped that we could work to build more philanthropic programs, like Swing for the Schools. And I'd hoped that we could talk about how the Board and Ola could work to build a program in the high school, so that Ola students would have a path when they graduate in the eighth grade. Instead, we're talking about legal attacks. You acknowledge yourself that you can't use taxpayer money anymore. It's because the community's tired, it wants to move on. We don't want to use more taxpayer money to fund anything. And I'll remind the board that even though taxpayer money may not be used to fund your council, every single one of you is actually going to be funding the Department of Education's defense and Ola's defense. Brian talked about, you know, where the funding is coming from. Again, that's going to be divisive, you know, you're bringing in outside interests into what should be a community discussion about how to move forward. I'm not going to say much more, but I'm deeply disappointed to be here, I'm deeply disappointed that we're pitting friends against friends tonight, and I really would like to move by this and try and work together as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cressby. Our next speaker, please.
Patricia Waiters.
Page 4/15. Action number 11, number six on the resolution. For the principal in the Wallace School, Roger Bowley. Yesterday, I reached out to a few people, which I didn't have enough time, but normally, you know, I am the activist of this city. I would have took action much quicker than this. I only had like, not even a half a day. Yes, I stand accused. I put these flyers out for Mr. Bowley, I gave some to a few parents. "We need a principal, not politics, wrongful termination." I was also told in my fact-finding, "Patricia, your information is absolutely wrong. Roger Bowley was not terminated." So, I do take this fact, if that is the fact, but it's not the fact. I had an opportunity to reach out to Mr. Bowley, and that wasn't the fact. He did resign, but it wasn't on his own free will. My question to him was, did any board member, and I text you, Peter, and I have it right here for evidence, I asked you, I tried to reach out to all the board members, if he did hypothetically resign, did any board member ask him to stay? Did any board member ask him what was he doing wrong and offer him to help him strengthen in that area? Because he said to me, "Patricia, I don't want to go in detail, but I don't have a job. I wonder how I'm going to feed my family and some other serious issues." And that don't sound like somebody resigning on their own free will to me. So, I'm quite sure he may have resigned, and this is only my opinion, because if he moved on and get another job, he don't want termination in the old folder and it'd have him blacklisted for life and mess up his pension or anything else. So, with that being said, I'm asking you, please, I will get on my knees in front of this whole council and beg you for resolution number six. Could you please table this, pull it off the agenda or something, because I'm telling you, this is not going to go away. And you've got three cop cars out there, you're going to need six. And this is not a threat, this is a promise, I will definitely protest this to the end. I have never seen a principal show this type of compassion, and my kid go to that school. And I know my kid could be a handful with me, and I teach him to respect authority. But to see Mr. Bowley at games, at our kids' game at nine o'clock at night, this man is involved in our kids' life more than a principal, he's a perfect role model, he gives them the positive reinforcement they need, he's doing an outstanding job. So, whatever anybody, whatever microscope you use to go examine what he's doing wrong and find that one little tiny thing, I'm asking you, please, work with him and not against him. Please. I didn't have enough time to look into this. Peter, please, again, I'm begging you, as a board member, give us that. It's for the children, it's for the teachers that worked there. Please, look into it, this is not fair, and I'm quite sure me have an opportunity to speak to him, this was not done by choice, trust me. And with that being said, too, I just want to say something on what Mr. Murray mentioned about how, when you, I'm wrapping it up, how things can happen with the charter school. My son cut the ribbon for Ola again, and I don't have nothing against nobody in Ola. I actually wish I could put him back in Ola. But once he left, it's like public school versus the charter since this thing ever happened at Wallace, when they first started arguing about the lawsuit. It's not fair. My son still played with some of those kids from Ola. We still want to be happy in the community as one big happy community, and it do cause conflict. So, please, with that Ola situation, too, work with us on that, too. No matter what school we go to, all our kids should play nice together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waiters. Next speaker, please.
Simone Cressby.
Thank you, Simone Cressby, 601 Harrison Street. First, I want to welcome Dr. Johnson. Certainly, an interesting day to start, and to join us. The other item I want to say is, embedded in the after-school activity list, I think I heard you say that the Tespian Club plays second statewide. That's a really impressive accomplishment, it was sort of buried in there, and I wanted to congratulate those students. That's, second statewide is at least impressive to me. And on to my main comments, I want to say, here we go again. At around this time last year, the Hoboken Board of Ed filed a lawsuit challenging the approval of Ola's charter renewal and expansion. Ultimately, the New Jersey Department of Education reaffirmed the decision, the second in as many years. And around the same time last year, Ola families came to the BOE meeting and asked for the board to drop this really incredibly disruptive and divisive action. The then-BOE president, Dr. Gold, made a statement, a statement that was repeated by then-superintendent Toback, that there is no lawsuit. You're entitled to want to be an ideologue, you're not entitled to false statements, you're just not. And so, I ask you to apologize to the Ola community.
Directly chair.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I just, thank you.
I ask that Dr. Gold, I apologize to the Ola community, as well as the broader Hoboken community for this patently untrue statement. It's really not acceptable. If you're going to thwart the expansion of Ola through the use of lawsuits and court action, own it. Own the action and the consequences. This type of legal action costs Ola, and hence taxpayers. You may not want to spend your budget on it, but when you're suing us, we're using taxpayer dollar to defend your action. And it takes attention away from educating our children, it adds a layer of uncertainty to our lives in terms of the continued existence of this innovative school. Ola is innovative, it has high academic performance. Own the action, that's divisive. And I just have to say, I went through some various calculations, and I don't have time to go through it now, but it's with really incredibly depressing irony that I note that to recoup less than 1% of the budget, this BOE, some with children in one of the elementary schools, with some of the, I'll skip without that, elementary schools, may vote to continue to harass and sue a successful, innovative charter school that matches the town's population while ignoring the challenges of Connors, which is really depressing. Vote to stop this lawsuit and appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cressby. Our next speaker, please.
Sonia Petracelli.
Petracelli? Is she here? Okay, I'm sorry.
Good evening. I'm here to speak on behalf of my daughter, who is at Ola. She's a sixth grader at Ola, and extremely looking forward to continue her education at Ola, seventh and eighth grade. So, she's been here, she's read it once, she's updated it, she's busy studying. This would have been her third time here, so I said she doesn't have to be here. So, she says, or she writes, "Dear Board of Education, my name is Yasmin Petracelli, and I am now a sixth grader at Ola. I have been at Ola since second grade. My brother goes there, too. He is now in fourth grade. We have both been attending Ola since the first day it opened its doors, five academic years. I love Ola. It is very unique, the only school in Hoboken that teaches you every subject in Spanish except English, of course. Every day, I go into class feeling very excited to speak and learn through a second language. And every year, I get better and better at speaking this language. Thus far, you can say I'm fluent in two languages, English and Spanish. Please do not stop my school from going to seventh and eighth grade. I want to continue there and master my bilingual immersion education. Please, let's all work together in offering the best educations and school choices in Hoboken. I'm happy that I had the school choice of language immersion education. And please, let's promote and encourage more languages taught in schools." She says, "Thank you very much," and her name is Yasmin. I am a product of bilingual immersion. Where I came from, it is mandatory that every school starts kindergarten two languages, the native language, and you can choose either French or English. I'm happy, I'm so happy that my kids have this opportunity here in Hoboken, and I hope that each and every one of you will give all the kids who are at Ola and any other parent who prefers a bilingual immersion education the opportunity to do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Cheryl Phulek.
Cheryl Phulek. Cheryl Phulek. And who's the next after that, so that they know their turn?
Olivia Moran.
Okay, so, Ms. Phulek.
I think this is maybe the first time I've ever spoken at a Board of Ed meeting. And the reason I came is because I saw a meeting a year ago on this subject that was really, when I watched it later, very upsetting to me. Obviously, education is an emotionally charged issue, complex one, and a very important issue, certainly to the parents of the children in the school system, whether it's Ola, the public school system, but also for those of us who don't have children. And in case I need to share why, I want all children to have a fabulous education. I want them to be inquisitive, compassionate, aware, aware of their neighbors. I want them to be able to think deeply about complex issues, because they're the leaders of tomorrow, when people like me are aged and want them to have that full education. For this reason, I came forward, because my personal feeling is there's no bad guy in this room. The problem is this formula. I applaud the speaker who spoke before me for not using the word divisive. I don't believe this board is being divisive. I believe that you are standing up for what you believe. Well, I guess the vote hasn't been taken yet, but what you believe is what you must do for the children of the public school. I believe the Ola parents are here because they're advocating on behalf of their children. But it just, it's so upsetting to me that the issue is one that does divide the whole community. I'm part of the community, I wanted to have a voice here. If you really believe that you are standing up for the children in the public school, then that's what you must do. So, thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Ms. Moran?
Olivia Moran, and following her will be Barbara Martinez.
Ms. Moran? Oh, and then Ms. Martinez, you're next.
Hi, my name's Olivia Moran, I'm 10 years old, and I go to Ola Hoboken Charter School. My address is 215 Clinton, and I'm a fourth grader. I really like Ola because I get an opportunity to learn a different language, as well a different culture of Spanish. Also, Ola is an amazing school, the teachers teach us a lot, and we get to have many fun things. Also, they go, we get to learn, like, in the summer, we have camps, like, they teach us about all the different countries that speak Spanish, and they teach us, and we have many teachers from different places, like, some from Spain, and some can come from anywhere else that speaks Spanish. And I also want you guys to consider dropping, well, not dropping, just stopping your idea to stop our expansion. Thank you.
You did a very nice job, Ms. Moran. Ms. Martinez?
Following Ms. Martinez would be Susan Customeros.
Barbara Martinez, 1125 Maxwell Lane. Ola is a public school, I just wanted to mention that again, it's worth repeating. Ola is a public charter school, it is a public school using taxpayer funds, just the way the district schools are. It's just a... You provided this amount of facts that you sent over to them, that we also reviewed, that amount of paperwork. We also submitted facts. And then the Department of Education did its own research. They're very smart people there at the Department of Education. It's not just a bunch of people just sitting there. They really considered this, twice. And you got to submit your facts, we submitted our facts, they did their research, and you just didn't like the answer that they came back with. And so, I'm not sure how much more than $100,000 you're going to need to spend, or make other people spend, in order to get the answer that you want. I don't think you're ever going to get the answer that you want. You're just going to keep continuing to spend taxpayer money on this. The sixth and seventh grade at Ola, which is what's at issue here, K through six, I mean, seventh and eighth grade, K through six is not at issue. That is done. Our kids are in K through six right now. You are not, you haven't challenged that at all. You are just challenging seventh and eighth grade. Seventh and eighth grade will cost no more than $640,000 of taxpayer money because those kids are being educated in a public school, just as they would be, just as the students who are educated in the district public schools. That is less than 1% of your budget. This is not about the budget. This is about charter versus district, and this lawsuit continues that, and it's not necessary. We can all work together, we can have a city that has a lot of different educational choices. It's what parents want. Parents want choices. They don't want a lawsuit, and taxpayers don't want to keep bleeding for something that is not going to change. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Customeros? Oh, she's going to pass the next speaker?
Lynn Danskier.
Ms. Danskier?
Following her will be Jen Sargent.
Lynn Danskier, 1313 Park Avenue. I actually haven't written anything down, and I actually don't even know what I'm going to say, but I just felt compelled to be up here because I'm so physically ill over what is going on in this community, a community that I've lived in for 18 years, a community that I've built a business, that my husband's built a business, and that I brought a child into the school district. This is all about money, and we know that. And the fact that you actually are accepting individual donations to perpetuate this abuse of power is mind-boggling to me. And I cannot wait to get the list of the folks that are funding this ridiculous legal action. And secondly, if you are doing such a great job getting outside funding, why don't you ask those same people to fund some productive choices and productive programs that will benefit everybody in the community? I mean, it's all about money, and at the end of the day, if you want to spend money wisely, and if you want to do fundraising, and if you want to do what's right for this community, do it the right way. And don't continue with this, because, as Barbara just said, you're just going to keep fighting it until you get your right answer, and you may never get that right answer. And so what happens? When do you finally decide that enough is enough? Challenge the classroom, don't put the challenge in the courtroom. This is about making education better for all. You've had five years to take the successes of our charter school and incorporate those learnings and those programs in your district schools so that not only Ola children can have a dual-language education, but everybody in this community will have a dual-language education from kindergarten all the way up to 12th grade. Now, wouldn't that be something that would be truly inspirational and innovation, innovative for our community? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Jen Sargent, followed by Sabrina Stoffel.
Ms. Stoffel, and then speaker?
Well, Jen Sargent, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So, and then Ms. Stoffel, you're next.
Jen Sargent, 518 Grand Street. I'd like to welcome the new superintendent. It was a pleasure to meet her, and I was really pleased to hear your comments about community building and about prioritizing all of the children in the community. That's certainly, I think, where all of us are coming from, and it's very good to hear. I'm really looking forward to building bridges between our schools and our administrations over the coming months and years. As Lynn mentioned, I think this really is all about the money. And the purpose of the lawsuit has changed, well, I don't know if the superintendent knows or not, but I'm one of the founders of the school, as well as being the director, and I've been having this conversation with all of you, most of you, for over six years now. And every time the Ola has come up for debate, whether it was the, we originally proposed it to the district as a district program, and we proposed it as a charter school, and now we're seeking to expand for our two classes of students per grades to go on to seventh and eighth grade. And every step of the way, the district has fought us, and every step of the way, there's been a different rationale for why the district has fought us. So, they talk about demographics, they talk about money, there's always something else. And I think, I'm not really sure what it all comes down to. But there has been to talk about the financial impact on the district, so let's focus on that, as Lynn was saying. And what is the strategy here exactly? You have over a million-dollar surplus that just sits there and rolls over from year to year. I heard the SBA say at a previous meeting, that was for a rainy day. What exactly is the plan for that less than 1% of your overall budget that Ola's seventh and eighth grade represents that is worth reversing the success of a very successful school? What exactly is the plan for that money? I haven't heard exactly what's so urgent about this that is worth the destruction that you're proposing and the end of the momentum that we have been able to achieve to this The lawsuit has already cost well over $100,000 of taxpayer money. The $100,000 is just between the district and Ola, and I don't even know how much the DOE has spent of taxpayer money on fighting the lawsuit to this point. And trust me, it's going to continue to cost taxpayer money regardless of where you'll be getting funds from. We're now forced to defend ourselves using taxpayer dollars, and we have a much, much smaller budget than you do. And for what? What's the big plan? What is the game plan? This isn't a competition. Every school in the district has something unique to offer, district schools and charter schools alike. Ola's a unique offering in the district because we have an immersion model. And for our children to continue through their middle school years, it is the only option in Hoboken because they have chosen this particular model of education. Our children have the right to continue in their model, since it's the only one of its kind in Hoboken. Charter schools can and do coexist with district schools in other districts. In fact, they can play a really big part in helping districts flourish as they provide choice within the district. Now, it's up to you to choose a productive relationship with the schools in your district, the other public charter schools in your district, rather than a destructive and combative one. There's a great deal of fatigue in the district and across the community, across schools, charter and district schools alike. We're exhausted from fighting this frivolous lawsuit and fighting time and time again for our continued existence. And the public is tired of the strife and really tired of footing the bill. I urge you to think hard about this as you vote on the resolution that's before you, the minimal impact that our tiny school has on the district, and the huge impact that your lawsuit has and will continue to have on the Hoboken community as a whole and on our parents. Let's move on, and let's focus our attention and our focus and our funds on educating the students instead of fighting this lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stoffel?
Hi, Sabrina Stoffel, 340 Garden Street. I'm so disturbed to be standing here talking about this topic again. It's unfathomable to me that this body would get together and write a resolution to pass privately, a privately funded continuation of a lawsuit. This is good news, though, because it means that you have ideas on how you can save your budget and that you can do fundraising. Right? Not right? Sort of right? It's kind of a shame that the Model UN folks aren't still here because they could see actual government happening right now with the people that are standing up here and talking about what they want for their community and how they want their community built up, and how they want to see people working together to achieve greatness together in their community. I'm looking for some nice words to use. I hope that my kids are going to go to Hoboken High School. My kids go to Ola. I have two kids, one's in second grade and one is in fifth grade. That's what I look forward to. I saw some of you on a tour recently. It's an excellent facility, what a great drama program and a great stage that the kids have access to, a pool, kitchen, great development in the AP program. A lot of this stuff wasn't used before, is being used now. This is what I want to see happening. You guys all have a lot of good energy that you can be putting together to use, to make it so that I want to choose to send my kids to Hoboken High School. That is what I want to choose. And so I hope that tonight, you choose to vote no. You will not continue with the lawsuit.
Thank you, Ms. Stoffel.
Felicia Palmer. I have a difficulty reading the last name, but I think it's Palmer.
Felicia Palmer, 251 Washington. I'm looking at the resolution, and it says that the DOE has made a failure in considering accurate student census data, socioeconomic information, and financial impact. And I understand that Barbara says that you guys submitted a substantial amount of information. So are you suggesting that the DOE rejected what you submitted to them? That they are not smart enough, intelligent enough, to work through all the paperwork that you've given them in order to make a determination? I doubt that. I think that they're pretty smart. I mean, you guys are part of this whole system, and, no disrespect, you're lower than they are, so I would think that they probably have some credentials to evaluate the materials that you've given them. So you're implying that they disregarded what you submitted to them? I think, I'm really concerned about the fact that you're raising private funds. I don't even know if that's legal. Think we need to look into that. But if I were a parent in Hoboken Public Schools, if I were a teacher, a aide, a bus driver, a cafeteria worker, or anybody that worked in Hoboken Public Schools, I would be up in arms. Because these per diem workers that you want to pass their rates, they're getting paid $80 an hour, I mean, $80 a day, $90 a day. That's pennies. The money that you're raising could feasibly be used to improve payment for these people, for the bus drivers, for the cafeteria. Earlier this year, was it last year, the bus drivers, you were laying them off because there was not enough money. So you're going to do all of this fundraising, it's unbelievable. Are you, you can't be serious. You're going to do fundraising to give the money to an outside council instead of using money to help your own school district? Your buildings are falling apart. Your children don't have proper books. There are cracks in glasses and holes in ceilings, and you're going to take extra money from outside fundraisers in order to use it for a lawsuit? If I were a parent, if I was anybody that had anything to do with this district, I would be up in arms. That is a disrespect. If you're going to have a lawsuit, then you take your own money and do it. And I think that it's also disrespectful for you to be continuing down this route, implying that the DOE somehow does not have the wherewithal and the understanding of Hoboken in order to make a determination about all the paperwork that you submitted. You had a chance. You submitted your best work, I'm sure. They submitted their best work. A determination was made twice. Come on. Everybody's tired, they told you. They're tired. For you to go, don't go against the will of the people. You've been elected by them, it's your job to listen. Thank you.
Joe Herman? Joe Herman? Herman, Joe Herman?
Mr. Herman?
Followed by Christine Herman Gladback.
And next is Ms. Gladback.
Hi, Joe Herman, 1239 Bloomfield Street. Prolific emailer to all of you last few days. I'd like to, two points to the new members of the board. Congratulations in getting on. Peter, I'm really glad you're back on, voted for you. In that, when you ran for the other two members, you specifically said you weren't going to be for this, that you were going to look to move on from this. I'd like to hold you to that, and I'm here to hold you to that. Second point, fundraising, this is about the money. You've said it's about the money. Ruth, you've told me it's about the money in a conversation we had. In that, we've got behind us one person who, she's not going to stand up, I believe, tonight and speak, but I'm going to speak for her. Not going to name her, but she has actually raised over a half a million dollars for Ola. She has done that in five years. She has gone out since this and contacted all of you in the fact that she wants to go in and make a residence for Red Wings program to try to get parents to go to Hoboken High School. She wants to help build this community. She's amazing. And she's done this kind of full-time, kind of part-time. You have slapped her in the face by continuing this lawsuit. You, everyone here, if you vote for this lawsuit, you have slapped this lady in the face, this lady who is energetic, who is phenomenal at fundraising, who could help. For a small school, she's raised half a million dollars in five years, and you're going to tell me that, you know, we built new rooms, we built a whole damn building practically. You guys can't fix yours. She can, God, if you get her support and help build this community, she'll fix your problems. I know she can. She's amazing, but you've slapped her in the face. And that's why I sent the email saying I'm very frustrated, because, and that's why I'm furious, because I know how much she really wants to go to Hoboken High School, but you've slapped her in the face. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gladback?
Madam President, Mr. Enrico Hadmotion, I don't know if he's still interested in...
I don't know if he's still interested in. It's up to the chair.
Hi, my name is Christine Herrmann Gladback and I live at 94 Clinton Street. I've spoken here many times before. I'm a very proud parent of public school kids. My daughter is in fourth grade at Wallace and my son is in seventh grade at the junior high school. So I wasn't going to speak today, but I actually saw the resolution about Mr. Bowley. And that is very concerning. He is an incredible leader and he listens to everything the parents have to say. He listens, he takes everyone's thoughts into consideration, and he comes up with solutions. And I don't know whether or not there's been any consideration as to how the parents feel about this, because I think by and large, the feeling is pretty consistent throughout. So I was surprised to see this resolution. And I would urge you not to accept his resignation because he is truly an amazing leader. So that's what I originally came up here to talk about. The other thing I would like to say about the continuing Ola issue is I'm proud to be from a town that has many school choices. I am not happy about the fact that it's coming at a cost. And that's the worst thing about it. I wish, as a community, we could somehow convince New Jersey to change its funding formula. I wish we all could do that because that's something we could all get behind. Why should one school suffer or districts suffer because of another district? I mean, we are truly funding for public school districts and it's expensive. So my hope would be that the community would come up with a better way to, everyone in the community would come up with a way to advocate for a better funding formula. And of course, every school has to watch out for their own kids. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Enrico?
That's the last speaker, right?
You're the last speaker, Mr. Enrico, but you still only get three minutes.
It's a great spot to be. There's a couple of questions I have to ask. How come the commissioner, when the superintendent of TNEC asked them for relief of their charter school situation, because it was going to cost them $500,000 out of their budget, he ruled in the Board of Ed's favor? Right? And if you look at the lawsuits, they're kind of similar. Now, I've only been here 40 years. I don't want to say there's politics in New Jersey, okay? But if you look at the lineup of whose children go to, not all the kids, but certain people go to that school who are connected, and I know it doesn't count in New Jersey, like your connections or anything, but there's pretty influential people there or were influential at one time. The commissioner of Ed did not look at the data correctly, okay? And you know what's sad about this? We don't have any of the public school parents here to get up and say what a good job our kids and what our children are entitled to. And I know I've heard it numerous times about, I want to send my kid to Hoboken High. But the problem is, I'm probably not going to live long enough to see that because we hear, you know, we want to go into Hoboken High. But an incident happened in New York. A charter school went to New York to a museum. I'm not going to say what charter school, but the tour guide, son or daughter, worked for the Hoboken Board of Education. They didn't know it, though. All right? And some of her comments, and one of the things the parents said, and this is a fact, we don't want to send our kids because of the bad social influence of the Hoboken school system. That's what the parents said. So, I mean, I don't want to win an Academy Award here or anything tonight, all right? However, that's really the issue here. And I said it and I'm on record saying that I don't want to bore, again, with the same thing. Okay? But the children in the public schools, you represent the public schools, children. If you did not take this on, I think the people in the district and the children and the teachers would be disappointed because this decision, though it went against you, was not, it was not done correctly. Because all you have to do, and I've said this, just stand outside of them just every day. Because I come here for meetings with the superintendent and I sit here and I sit in the car and I watch kids cross the street. I don't know. The majority of them seem, and I'm a white person, I tell you, the majority of them, seven out of 18 in the class. I don't want to get into that. I'm going to drop that. But if the data was looked at correctly, and this, and I even told Dr. Brock Kelly, he says, you're going to lose this. Because the politicians, starting with Governor Christie, they're big for charter school, you are taking them, you are, I think if I could ask you for one more minute, you are taking the money. And if you want your private school, that's fine. But just picture everyone in one school system and the $9 million, $9.5 million that's going to come back to our district. You have 700 kids, say we hire 40 teachers, $50,000 a kid, what's it, $2 or $3 million? We keep $2 million for all the incidentals. We give $4 or $5 million back to the taxpayers. The taxpayers drop, our test scores are going to come up and then you'll all be in Hoboken High. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Enrico.
Sorry, I apologize. My name was on the list. Can you just check? I signed up at the beginning of the meeting, Jeffrey Train.
Yeah, you're listed under public discussion, which is at the end.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was for this. I didn't realize that it was for that. There were two sheets. Is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you so much.
Cross them off.
I apologize for that.
That's okay. It's confusing. There were a lot of clipboards.
So my name is Jeffrey Train. I live at 402 Madison and I'm here tonight as a father concerned citizen. I should also let you know that I am a public school teacher. And I'm also, full disclosure, the leader of my school's Gay Straight Alliance as well as the Multicultural Club. So I am someone who fights every day and advocates for people who don't have a voice. And in many ways, boards of education kind of terrify me because there's no other profession than education where people who aren't in the building every day are the bosses. I couldn't go as a teacher to a law firm and get elected to a board and say, I'm going to tell you how to be a lawyer. But you guys come here and you judge teachers and schools. The Hoboken Reporter stated that the money from this lawsuit is being funded by non-taxpayer money. Why be surreptitious? Who is funding this? And if this individual is so impressed, why can't he or she sue as an individual? We have a right to know this person's motivations and clearly, his or her motivations have little to do with pedagogy, good pedagogy and sound academic results. I urge you to consider the consequences of this sham of a lawsuit. First, I have a few bones to pick. Can I give you a few dollars and you can lead my lawsuit? Second, the city has wrestled with this particular issue in court twice. It's been reviewed, argued, analyzed, and it has been shown and ruled that this school does not encourage or promote segregation. It does not have a segregative effect. The irony is that this lawsuit is actually turning the community against itself and This board will be complicit in this lawsuit if you do not vote to halt it tonight and the person or individuals who are behind it should come out, out in the open. Thank you.
Did you, okay, this is the last one. Please come forward. State your name for Bill to write it down, Mr. Moffitt to write it down. And then we're done. Then I'm moving on.
Sorry, Dan Weaver, 1141 Garden. I'll be quick. I'm sorry, I was late. I was meeting my tax guy at home. So taxes. Something resonated with me. I was here, not in this building, but in the other building, when all the Ola parents were there talking about, you know, it could be extended and they read all these beautiful letters from their children and it was fantastic. But number one, where are they asking to raise our taxes to help offset this burden? Are they writing letters saying, yes, we should pay more taxes? You know, I think it'd be great if they would actually step forward and say, yes, we want all the kids in Hoboken to receive an equal education, so therefore, we should pay more taxes. Secondly, everyone stood up here and said, especially the last gentleman, you know, it was, Trenton looked at it twice. How could Trenton be wrong? I mean, seriously? That's like a rhetorical question. I mean, of course Trenton's wrong. I can't even remember my last time Trenton was right. I mean, the Hoboken Public Schools are for everyone and that's what I love about it. Whether you have children who have special problems, or you have children who come from homes which don't have the advantage of maybe a stay-at-home parent, you know, it is a great cross-section of America. And my son, Gabriel, who is in the fifth grade at Wallace, he enjoys that school more than anything. He plays the trumpet. He tried playing the drums, didn't really work out. But that's what he loves about it. And I've even talked to, and I will not name names, and you're going to say, well, then you're lying, but I swear I am not. But I've spoken to parents, one particular parent whose kid was counseled out of Ola because they, because, quote, "Well, it's maybe not the right environment for them." And now, sure, that's fine. You can do that. You can say, well, you know, maybe not all schools are for all kids. But that's what's beautiful about public school. Every school is for every kid and they teach them regardless of their background, regardless of their learning ability. And there's challenges that the public school has that the charter schools just, they just, they don't have, those rules don't apply to them or they're counseled out. And I would say, this private fund, yeah, sign me up. I'll write the first check. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. And I want to thank everyone who's come tonight for being very respectful to all the speakers. That's very appreciated by myself and the full board and the administration. Now, is there, we've...
Do you want to comment on this public portion?
I thought perhaps, would we want to maybe poll an item to vote on separately and we could vote and comment at the same time or should we just comment?
I think we should. I may, Mr. Gold. I think we should comment on public agenda.
Okay. So this is what we're going to be commenting, but why don't we comment on just, well, no. Okay, no, forget it. Full agenda comments, we'll do. Okay?
But wait, I'm really confused. Are we going to just talk about the lawsuit item or are we going to talk about everything? Because if we're going to talk about everything, the whole public hasn't spoken about it.
Yeah, that's what I would like. I would like to just have us comment first on the Ola, on the Ola appeal item. And I'd like us to vote separately on that and then we can, as a second portion, comment on the other agenda questions that were brought up, you know, separately so that we don't lengthen this.
Can I make the suggestion, and please tell me, that since we are going to talk about Ola, that we take that item and vote on it after we've finished our talking so we don't have to re... So I would make a motion that the Ola item, what's that, 11101?
11.21.
The 11.29 be voted on after our discussion now and then continue with the public portion. That's my motion.
Mr. Gold made a motion. Is there a second?
I would like to talk about Ola now and then vote on it. And then continue with the other agenda items if the board is comfortable with that. So I make that motion.
I don't think it has to be a motion. Does it have to be a motion?
Well, we'll just do it to be...
Second.
Okay, so as everybody understands, what we're going to do is we've pulled that particular item out of the agenda. We're going to just be discussing that particular item and then we're going to vote on that item. And then after that, we'll again discuss the public comments that were made and items that we want to discuss as a board on the remainder of the agenda. So I... Ms. Angley? This is comments.
In the last 24 hours, I've received over 100 emails from the Ola and charter school communities. The consistent message was to leave Ola alone. There is no doubt that this situation has become very personal. I ask Ola and the other charter school communities to take a step back and look at this from a different perspective. It's a very simple concept. As growth takes place in the charter schools, the district is required by the state to pay those charter schools more money without receiving additional funding to cover those costs. This takes funding away from the district children. If the tables were turned, would you be willing to give up funding for your students so that district students could have more? Clearly, I'm focused on the financial impact. I see this as a funding issue which should have been addressed by the state but wasn't. I am supportive of fair and equitable treatment for all students, but the bottom line is, we need more money. We need more money to fund the charter schools and we need more money to continue to improve our district schools. In order to accomplish this, I feel the community needs to support a tax increase. And ideally, maybe we could exempt the long-term elderly residents. So while not supporting further legal action by the board, I am hopeful that the community can see the challenges the board faces and support fair and equitable treatment for all of our students.
Peter?
Mr. Biancamano?
Thank you.
Now, we're going to do our normal.
And then we're going to vote after comments.
Exactly.
Okay, gotcha. Some questions, and I hope Ms. Fabian or Ms. Evans can help me answer these questions. The last paragraph on this resolution, which many, many speakers came up to discuss tonight, private donations, not from taxpayers' money. Ms. Fabian, I was just curious. Can private donations stay anonymous when they're donating to a public entity such as schools? And I'm only asking, and I would let you answer that question because tonight is a perfect example. We have a treadmill that's being donated to this district and it's on the agenda tonight.
The answer is only if you give an envelope of cash. The answer is it cannot be anonymous.
I'm sorry?
Only if you leave an envelope of cash on the doorstep of Hoboken. Otherwise, it cannot be anonymous.
It cannot be anonymous.
But somebody has to go through the effort to operate with whatever intentions they have in mind. But it is operable.
But, Mr. Gold, it will come on the agenda if we accept the donation if it's not cash, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
That's my question. Okay, number one.
Correct.
And how much are we looking to raise here? I mean, do we have a set number? Because if we don't, if we fall short of what it's going to cost for special counsel, who's going to pay for it? Do we have to vote on paying more for this lawsuit out of our budget? That's my fear.
From the Finance Committee, I'm just going to answer. I wish you asked that before.
I only received this resolution on Sunday night.
Could have, but we're going to raise what we can. I mean, I'm going to contribute. There goes my guitar. The fact is, nobody's trying to hide this amount. The real irony, I'm sorry, but if we funded this with our money, you would have yelled at us for funding with school money. If we funded getting contributions, you're yelling at us for doing it with contributions. So why don't we just cut it and say, we're not happy you're going to follow through with this? But I think there are issues and what I'm answering your question. $40,000. We are not spending any of the school money.
So you're looking to raise $40,000?
I don't know, but that's a number, okay? What's the question you're asking?
Mr. Gold, I really, really believe that we need to figure this out before we can ask for public donations. Because if we fall short, I'm going to be, who's going to be liable for that?
Okay, gentlemen?
But Dan Trump is here.
I need to think this out a little bit more. I really, really do.
I think that it's clear where you both stand on this. Mr. Biancamano, do you want to say something else?
I have one additional question. I'm just curious, and again, Ms. Fabian, how are we authorizing a resolution that we are not funding tonight? Shouldn't donations come in first before we hire special counsel? Because in essence, that's what we're doing. We're hiring special counsel and we don't have the funding for it as of this time.
Okay. It's my understanding that once the funding comes in, then special counsel will be authorized to proceed with the appeal.
And I rewrite in a check and other people rewrite in a check and funding and the thing will proceed if everybody votes for it. Don't worry about spending my money, okay?
Well...
Okay. Okay.
I'm worried about it. I'm very, very concerned about, we're not going to raise enough money for this. I mean, unless, Mr. Gold, you know that there's 10 to 15 to 20 people already who are going to be funding this. Do you know that?
What do I know?
So you don't know, I understand.
Okay, I think this, it's clear. Both of your positions on this item...
But, Ms. Tyrell, if anybody on this board knows that there's people coming out, and one volunteer came out tonight, I think he left tonight, which, okay. If anybody on this board knows that we're going to raise enough money to appeal this, I think it needs to be made public right now. I think we need to say, look, we're gonna raise $50,000, and we're gonna put this on this agenda to hire special counsel. That's just my opinion.
Thank you.
Does anybody know?
Thank you for, we'll continue.
I have comments before I do.
Thank you, Mr. Biancamano. Ms. Mitchell?
It's all about maintaining a thorough and efficient education for the children of the Hoboken Public School District. I've been baffled that we're vilified for protecting the interests of our district children. The board majority is not satisfied with having to fund an expansion of a charter school to the detriment of our own district. If the state adequately funds both fairly, this problem wouldn't exist. Commissioner Hesby issued his letter on March 20th and ruled against the Hoboken School District. The decision is flawed because it relies on census population data of babies from zero, infants from 0 to 17-year-old teenagers, rather than the population of the actual district that starts at 5 years old to 18. The commissioner also ignored this district's request to assess the socioeconomic disparity and financial impact of Ola's expansion on the Hoboken Public Schools. I understand why Ola is fighting to keep their status quo. It benefits them. The problem is that their expansion negatively affects our district. I'm a proud parent of a high schooler, and the school board, and a school board member elected to represent the interests of the children of this district, and I fully endorse this resolution.
Ms. Sogol?
Yes. To me, one of the main issues at the core of this is the law, following the law. It was a good law, and it was made with good intent in the beginning. When charters began about 10, 15 years ago, they were seen as a way to offer an alternative to the local district, but they were always intended to accept and serve the same students as the local schools. And laws were made at that time to ensure this balance within the community. It was never intended for charter schools to become a separate district, serving different kinds of students. Laws were specifically established to make sure that this didn't happen by calling for a balance of students racially and by academic factors, which defined by the DOE are students with special needs, English language learners, and children impacted by poverty, usually measured by free and reduced lunch. Unfortunately, for a variety of reasons, many different reasons, all kinds of different reasons, the community is now unbalanced. We now have one district serving almost all of the town's disadvantaged students and children with special needs. There is also a racial imbalance. It's wrong. It is wrong, and it needs, excuse me, excuse me.
Please be respectful. Everyone was very respectful up here while you all were talking. Same, I want the same here, or else you're gonna be asked to be removed. We must be respectful to each other. Thank you.
It is unbalanced, for whatever reason. I'm not blaming, blame, it is wrong, and it is something that I think that we would all want to fix for our community. We would all want that for our children, that we would not want for our publicly-funded schools to separate children divided by income or their special needs. I've always welcomed the community conversation, and I hope that these imbalances would be addressed together. We could have discussed solutions, but unfortunately, that was not successful. It's already been a year since the superintendent had tried to get everybody together, and it was unsuccessful. Unfortunately, the Commissioner of Education has not provided any relief or assistance to the children of Hoboken. He has refused our request for help in addressing this imbalance and/or provided any financial relief to the students impacted. The Commissioner of Education's refusal to follow his own laws in this matter has real consequences for real children, our children, the children of the public schools. Our families and our children are being asked to step aside and do without, so this imbalanced system can continue. And it's wrong, and I think it should be addressed by all of us as a community. If this is, we need to understand where we're going and how we want our community to be. So unfortunately, it has led to the courts, and hopefully, he will then do his job and examine the laws as they exist on the books. Thank you.
Okay.
Dr. Gold?
Okay, a few throwaways before I start. First, when Dr. Toback said it wasn't a lawsuit, it wasn't a lawsuit, now it will be. And so, also, for those of you that want to argue the merits of how well the DOE looked at the case, do some homework. Our brief is online, Ola's brief is online, read the two and compare them. It's there for you to read and do it. These are my own words, because our attorney thinks a lot higher of the Department of Education than I do. But I view this finding as cynical, flawed, and pernicious. Now, let me explain why I think it's that way, and let me go over some history. This lawsuit did not have to take this much time, and it did not have to cost as much money as it did. After the Department of Education came up with their finding, we went to appellate court. The brief was there, we wanted the appellate court to say something. Instead, in the infinite wisdom of the Department of Education, they said, give us a second look. Now, usually, when you look at something the second time, you change what your mind is. But they said, let's look at it again, because I'm afraid of what the appellate division might say to me. So they looked at it again, and they cost us more money, because we had to file a new brief, and you had to file a new brief. And they came up with a decision that can only be viewed as cynical, because it did not consider all the information given them, and it pushed the deadline such that it would make it very hard to stay the 7th and 8th grade. And it cost the Board of Education money. They have an instinct. How could we say we want to go ahead with this suit if it's gonna cost a financially-strapped district money? We couldn't do that. And now, everybody's concerned about paying for it out of a lot of the board's members and interested people. And you talk about tearing the community apart, how many of you threatened, I will get their names and waive them and show the community who is backing this suit? Hey, great, talk about respect. 100 emails from Ola to my personal email account, not to my Board of Education account, to my personal account. Intimidation? I don't know. No, my family wasn't happy, but all's fair in education, I guess. So this was the history. Ola asked, I mean, actually, the Department of Education asked for a second look. They then came back and said, hey, our first opinion was right. There is no segregation. So it was cynical, because the Department of Education gained their own system. How is it flawed? It was flawed because their analysis was wrong in two ways. There was a failure of omission and commission. They looked at data they shouldn't have looked at. I mean, a lot of 2 and 0 and 2, 1 and 2-year-old kids go to schools, wrong. And they compared people that go to private schools. So the analysis, and I think this is our strongest point, will show that by their very own standard, their analysis was flawed, and I do know something about data analysis. And it was pernicious in its outcome, meaning very harmful and insidious. Why? Because if this ruling holds, it will allow every school district in New Jersey that is being revitalized to have two separate educational systems. Allow you to have an educational system of the best and the brightest. Allow you to have an educational system that has some of the best and the brightest, but also are separated in terms of demographics, separated in terms of disabilities, and separated in terms of their educational potential. So there's no alternative, in my opinion, and as I said, I'm willing to put my guitar where my mouth is, even though I really can't play, is that this needs to be funded, and it shouldn't hurt the school system anymore. And I'm not gonna be the biggest contributor, believe me. The big ones, I assume, don't take credit for it, that's the way generous people are. But the point is, it's something I strongly believe in, and I think it's our duty to do that. If Ola lost the case, you know you would appeal. And it's what we have to do. Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Gold. Ms. Evans?
When the Department of Education asked for another opportunity to review its assessment of Ola's request to expand, and then took so long to give an answer, I was very hopeful. Hopeful that the Department of Education would do its job, as required by law, and offer relief to our community. Relief from the segregative effect, and also relief from the financial impact, specifically by fixing a funding formula in which an increase in one district's funding means a decrease in another. And yet, the Department of Education did not do this at all. It used flawed data and analysis to justify racial imbalances between the two districts, and completely ignored the differences in socioeconomic status between the children enrolled at these schools. The Department of Ed then ignored the financial impact of the expansion on the district and its students. Again, the funding for the expansion comes from the district budget. In my opinion, the Department of Education has not just a legal, but a moral and ethical obligation to consider these factors. With this decision, the Department of Education is saying it is okay to take away funding from a district that supports our community's most vulnerable children, not just those living in poverty, but also those with special needs. We disproportionately educate these children. Education, we heard tonight, and I have heard, I'm sure, many times over our lifetime, is that education is supposed to be the great equalizer. It's supposed to give each child an equal, an equal chance in life. It can help a child break the cycle of poverty, but it costs money. What is happening in Hoboken is happening all over the state of New Jersey. It'll be hard to fix, but that is what the Department of Education is supposed to do. It's not just supposed to ignore it. I can't ignore it either.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Mr. Kupphill?
Everybody else has spoken so eloquently and has expressed some of the thoughts that I've been debating over the past several days. So many of the emails that I received were more or less polite, some were rude and belittling today, and those hurt a little bit. I hear a lot about choice, and nobody here is probably a stronger advocate for parental school choice than I have been for the past 15 years or so, longer than that, my wife and I, as founders of the Elysian Charter School. I will be funding, I will be donating money to this, because it is the right thing to do. It's as right as the tens of thousands of dollars we spent in founding the Elysian Charter School all those years ago. No one ever asked me about that, no one ever challenged me about that. But this is always, back then, it was about providing quality education alternatives to our low-income kids, and that remains the issue today. I have no choice in this. I was elected by the community members, such as they are, Board of Education election, I believe, to nurture and protect the children in this district. There are three other districts in this town with their boards, those boards look out for them. I have no choice in this. I will be voting yes on this resolution, and I intend to support it. I did ask, I have to be careful what I say here, probably, because some of it has to do with attorney privileges, but I did ask some questions. There was no way to proceed with this continued challenge with the Department of Education. You need, you need a reason, right? We can't, we can't do it without, without the current petition. And one can make, I did ask, one can make contributions earmarked specifically for this cause. It's my understanding, Peter, that it's gonna cost substantially less than $40,000 to do whatever it is, file the next appeal with the appellate division. And my understanding of this resolution is that we will not take any action, we will not encumber the district any fees unless we raise that money. I'm not sure that we have the exact estimate yet, but that's, that's the, that's the resolution that I intend to vote for. Thank you.
You know, that's the, we've, it's always so interesting when two sides of a, I'm gonna call it a discussion, talk about the same things and truly are seeing them from two different angles, but we're all talking about the same things. We talk about funding, we've talked about the segregative effect, we've talked about school choice, and someone said that they felt physically ill, and I can say that I have felt physically ill about this for the whole time too. And that's how all of us are. Nobody likes this. I'm sorry, I just, I don't wanna... We have a situation here where we, we have laws, and we write laws so that whoever's in power, they can't, they have to follow the laws. That's so that if, whether an administration, if we want to even look at this as the Department of Education having a favoritism, which quite frankly, we don't want them to have a favoritism, but if we do look at it, that a situation can be that an agency has, is showing favoritism, we don't want someone who's pro-public school to come in and miss, and not follow the laws. We don't want someone who's pro-charter to come in and not follow the laws. I think everybody can agree to that. We want them to follow the laws.
Frank, please. Be respectful. No one on this board, or any of the people that were supporting our position, spoke out or made any comments during the comments. I don't need help coming to where I am in my discussion. Thursday, one of the speakers that came up tonight talked about the Board of Ed being the bosses, and there could never be anything farther from the truth. The Board of Education is a body that has one job, and that's to elect the person that sits in this chair, as you witnessed this evening. This is the educational leader of our district, and this is who makes the decisions about what's happening in our schools. This is the person that makes the decisions as to whether or not to hire or rehire. As a board, we are not, ethically sworn that we are not supposed to be, by our code of ethics, involved in the day-to-day operation, and especially, the personnel. If you look back on this, this, our position was a position made by our educational leader. It was a position made that he pointed out to us about what was going on and how he felt, and we, as a board, supported that position that was originally made by our educational leader at the time, which was Dr. Toback. We now have a new interim educational leader, which we, Dr. Brakal, who's been here while we were looking for a permanent superintendent, and he had the same opinion. So this is two educational leaders, both having the same opinion. We needed, we asked the Department of Education to look at this based on two factors. We asked them to look at this as the impact to the funding, and we asked them to look at it as the segregative effect according to socioeconomic. It has to do with a school, when I look at our district, I don't think anybody can deny it. Where are the, the poor kids are all in the district schools. They're all in the district schools. That's the... One more outburst, and I'm having them remove you. It is impolite and inappropriate. That is actually a very good point. Choice, we know as a district, the choice works against having the appropriate distribution among the schools. You want to point to that, to Connors, and say, and yes, it does, and it's because that's who chooses to go there, that there is a large development right near Connors that is people of lower income, that is the... people of lower income, that is the closest building. Interestingly, none of them picked up themselves in your lottery, which is a little bit farther away. And the real problem is people selecting not to go there that live in the neighborhood who are not poor. That is what's happening there. Choice is causing problems in our own district. So here we have this situation. We have this disparity, and I don't think anybody wants that disparity. I don't think anybody wants it to look like that. I just can't believe that you do. And that's what this is about, and he refused to look at that data. He did not look at that data. And that is what all of us are saying, and that is what we need. In this country, when you believe a law is being broken, when you believe that something isn't correct, and I'm going to use this, I feel that this is a civil rights violation, what's going on in our community today. And I think it's a responsibility of the Department of Education to do what they need to do to make sure that we have a system that distributes our different populations throughout our district children. I don't see how we can figure that out based on, we need them to help us do that, and that's what this is about. And I can't in good conscience continue to not point out what I consider a unconstitutional situation. You disagree, we have different feeling, you know, we have our thoughts, that is why there is an appellate division, that is why there is a court system, so that these kind of things can be figured out and at that level. That's the way our system works. So I take this very seriously. I expect every elected official to take their decisions that they make very seriously. They have to put first, the law and the Constitution, second, the most important body in our case that we represent, the children, and of course, the people in the town. As far as the public, the private funding goes, I don't think anybody who is, who has committed themselves to this, to funding this, is going to, they're going to tell you who they are, and they're individuals. They're individuals who have children in the schools, or individuals that see this as a situation that needs to be corrected because it's unconstitutional. And you might not feel that way, but that's what the court's for, and you can't fault us for fighting for our children. As to people that want to help in the schools and do things, everyone is welcome to that. If fighting for our kids means you don't want to work with us, there's nothing we can do about that. So with that, Mr. Moffett, will you please call the roll for the vote on this item?
Ms. Angley?
No.
Mr. Biancamano?
I just, neat comments. The question, I came in with questions, I feel like they were vaguely answered. I feel like I received, well, you know, don't worry about it, or, well, you know, we'll raise enough money for the lawyers to appeal this decision. But what about if the lawyers make a mistake and some of the cost even more money? Do we go back to donors? Or is, again, is it going to come out of our budget? I can't in good conscience vote for an appeal that's causing a divisive nature in our community. I voted against it two times before. I represented children of this district every day. Yes, I do, Mr. Enrico. You could tell by the way I voted.
Okay. Please don't talk to each other.
But I also have an obligation to represent the taxpayers of our community as well because they're paying for this budget. No.
Thank you.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Dr. Gold?
Please, I would hope that Peter would listen at least to our attorney occasionally. This is not going to cost the Hoboken District any money. That simple. There's not going to be any responsibility. The onus is on us. That's a fact. Is that the fact, attorney?
Yes. Part of this resolution is that it will be funded by private donations.
So that's it? What are you arguing about? So I'm voting yes.
Record that as a yes.
No comment.
Wait, wait, please. I'm voting to continue the suit. So that's yes, right?
Correct.
Good.
Ms. Kupfel?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Sobolov?
Yes, although I think it's unfortunate that it had to come to a court case, I think that it's an important community conversation that is hard. It's hard and it's sticky and it's uncomfortable, and I believe that we can all get through it, and I think it has to happen. I think that we all need to understand where we are and where we're going and what we want to be, and I think it's unfortunate that that came to the courthouse, but I don't think that precludes also continuing the conversation, but I vote yes.
And Ms. Tyroller?
I vote yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so now we will move on to board member consent agenda comments, or does anybody want to call an item?
I'd like to pull one item from the consent.
Okay.
And you know what item it is. Don't make me go look, please.
Okay, let's just wait a moment while...
I'd like to pull item 1301.
Okay, 1301 is being polled.
Of course. Actually, can we have a one-minute recess just to let everybody?
Okay, we're just going to take a one-minute recess.
Okay, we were just, Mr. Gold was calling.
Make a motion to vote on the consent agenda except for item 1301's polled.
Well, I have questions. You can ask questions before, correct?
A second.
You want to ask questions?
I can do before.
Okay, because...
You can move it, you can second it.
So we're having...
However you want to do it, it's fine with me.
Are we going to speak when we vote, or do we want to have a discussion first?
Are we doing, wait, now I'm confused.
Okay, I am, too.
Are we voting on the item being polled, or we voting on the consent agenda?
Let's vote on the consent agenda.
That'd be great.
Let's do that.
Consent agenda minus 1301, is that?
Oh, but we haven't had comments. We haven't had comments on the consent. Okay, first, we're going to have comments on the consent, on the consent, consent agenda minus the polled item. Ms. Angley?
No comment.
Mr. Biancamano?
One comment. Resolution 12.08, Mr. Moffett, this question's for your awarding of mid-year student transportation contracts for this year. So these are new vendors for new routes, correct? Because I noticed that one was costing us $79,000, and my, I guess the final question would be, altogether, are we really saving money with privatization if we keep adding routes mid-year that cost us $79,000? I think there was another route that cost about $59,000.
Well, the mid-year route process is we awarded a 45 temporary contract to an individual transporter for various reasons. One could be performance, another could be a new student IEP was crafted without a district placement, so we create a new route, so we give a 45-day roughly temporary contract, and then what we do is we come back in and do a permanent, and that's what you're seeing tonight. Some items will change because some of the original temporary contractors don't bid during the mid-year process, but to deal with, I guess, the question that you have, is this is the same process that you would have gone through as far as changes to routes in mid-year process throughout the school day, I should say, the school year, this year, last year, and beyond. Basically, there are things that come up and change. In other words, like we have, for example, 10 students, and we decide as a school system to divide the route, that would also be part of the process. That happens under normal circumstances from year in and year out.
Okay, so just to be clear, these new transportation companies that are coming in are replacing other transportation companies that we had since the beginning of the year? Or we're just renewing?
In some instances, yes.
So are these additional transportation companies?
Okay. They would be in the event it's a new student. If a student was placed mid-year, you would have 45 days mid-year.
Okay. And again, I looked at the contract amount for one provider, and it was close to $80,000. And again, I have to ask the question, is it costing the district, is it saving the district money for privatization?
I believe so, yes.
You believe so, or you really feel that way?
You asked me a question, and I said yes.
Do you have any numbers of where, or can you please provide us with numbers for the next meeting?
We can discuss it in finance, yes, and we can, we'll discuss it also with Mr. Callagie's committee.
I can discuss it in my committee as well, absolutely. Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell? Any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
No.
Ms. Sobolov?
I just wanted to, on 1109, there's 14 parent volunteers for the Shrek. I just wanted to thank them for their, you know, for their service for the kids.
Dr. Gold?
No.
Ms. Evans?
No.
Mr. Kupfel? Call the roll, the vote, please.
Call roll for consent agenda minus 1301. Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Mr. Biancamano?
Abstain on 12.05, yes on everything else.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Dr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Kupfel?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Sobolov?
Yes.
And Ms. Tyroller?
Now we will proceed to have comment on 13.01.
Start over there.
Ms. Angley?
No comment.
Just a procedural thing, I'll move 1301.
Okay, second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
I probably will have comments, but not at this time. I'm going to wait for everybody else to...
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes, 1301 is the...
For the fees for the...
Indemnification of legal fees.
Yes. When board members publish and broadcast blatant misrepresentations of facts, they must be called out on it. We're elected officials. In my opinion, Peter Biancamano, a member of the Finance Committee, was well aware of the information that he published with his name and photos, that it was not true.
Ms. Sobolov?
Should I just say the comment? Should I do it now or before the vote?
It's up to you.
Right.
Well, why don't I make a comment then when we vote? A little history. Mr. Bianamano ran for city council. I'm willing to see in the future and bet that he does it again. And with his campaign literature, what was also piggybacked was the Board of Education's candidacy. What I consider misrepresentations about the finances of the school were made, and, which was surprising since he was on the Finance Committee at the time, but, not me, but ethics charges were brought up against him. I didn't make them. And he has the right for representation. So he went and got a $450 lawyer an hour. This is the same board member that's complaining that we're paying our attorney $185 an hour. I would ask, did you compare other lawyers that were available? Was anybody cheaper? Even though they say a person that defends themselves has a fool as a client, this case was, it didn't have to be defended. I think you could have defended it yourself. It's my understanding that the people that brought up the ethics charges actually did not have an attorney and just presented the facts. My reading of the case, I went to the, maybe Mr. Biancamano feels that 400, the price of, and I looked at these two words, puerile obfuscation, but the fact, I'll say it again, puerile obfuscation, well, I gave the wrong facts, but I didn't give the wrong facts. I didn't mean to mislead. Well, somebody else printed it, I didn't know. The dog ate my homework. I'm not sure what happened, but the fact is, I don't believe ethics charges were actually, were actually placed on his record. Other people could speak to what happened because, again, I wasn't involved. However, what I'm upset about is that the going price to defend oneself shouldn't be $450 an hour when you are complaining about how much our legal fees are. And if you have right on your side, I, I'm not even sure you should have had an attorney, but even if you did have an attorney, I don't believe this one was appropriate. Did he spend more? Maybe yes, maybe no. We never saw any checks other than the check he submitted to us for approval. Unfortunately, we have to pay it, but I just, every time a specific board member talks about saving the county money on this board money, I hope we all think of $450 an hour. Okay.
Ms. Evans? Mr. Kupfel? Should we take the vote? Would you like to comment then?
Yeah.
Okay. So call the roll for vote, please.
No, I would like to comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, 17 months ago, there was an allegation after I ran for city council, and the allegation was later withdrawn, which means that there's no ethics charge, which means that the board member who brought this up against me, we came, we sat down, and we figured it out. But I had to represent myself and defend myself from what I thought was an attack politically, as a board member who doesn't normally run under the banner of other board members up here. Yeah, there was a mailer that was sent out. Yes, I never saw the content of that mailer. I took responsibility for that mailer, even though the content I never saw before, but there was no ethical ramification on it. In terms of the amount that I'm asking for tonight, trust me, Mr. Gold is 100% right. It was a $450 an hour attorney. The attorney has cost me way more than what I'm getting reimbursed tonight. Because of my stance on legal fees and because I needed to defend myself in my name, I wanted to come up with a settlement to this board to just pay the initial retainer that I paid my attorney. Plain and simple. There was an allegation, it was withdrawn, there's no record of any ethics charges, you can go on any state ethics site, because it was withdrawn. And I feel that if this charge wasn't brought upon me in the first place, I feel that I wouldn't even have to hire an attorney, but it was, and we did settle it later on, unfortunately, after I had to get an attorney. And again, there was allegations made about other board members up here that came to my attention, and I didn't file an ethics charge. I decided to do it internally because I knew it was going to cost the board money in the future. I wish mine could have been done internally, but it wasn't. They decided to go a little further and then decided to withdraw it, and we're going to move on. So I need to defend myself, and I believe that with the attorney that I had, my record remains clean, and I, that's it. Thank you, Madam President.
Call the roll for vote, please.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Mr. Biancamano?
Abstain.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Dr. Gold?
Again, have to push the issue. You could have shopped around for lawyers. I don't know how much, if anything, was paid additionally to the lawyer. You are evaluated on what you did. I think people should look at that material and realize it was a misrepresentation, and maybe this board member did get his money's worth.
Dr. Gold, your vote, please?
What?
Said, Dr. Gold, your vote, please?
Do I have a choice?
No.
The answer, by the state law, the answer has to be yes.
I appreciate your understanding to my request.
Mr. Kupfel?
This is a shame, but yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Sobolov?
Yes, he has a right to an attorney. We do have to pay that, it is the law that's true. But we have had discussions, Mr. Biancamano and I, because he would always want to have the caps, and I, and sometimes I, you know, would get dinged for not voting on the caps, and it was for these very reasons that it was hard to nail down legal costs, because you never know who was going to sue you or what the case was going to be about, and you didn't know if the person was going to go, you know, get a lawyer that was two and a half times the board attorney. I do have a problem with the rate. So, you know, my gut is to vote no.
And Ms. Tyroller?
Though I will be abstaining on this because I think it's inappropriate for me to vote on it, I am the board member that filed the ethics charges. And the reason I filed the ethics charges is because I believe that it's very important for all elective officials to follow their code of ethics. And I found, I believed that misrepresentation of budget numbers and showing something that to me was grossly inaccurate was inappropriate for a board member because it does damages to the school. I did not, I represented myself, and, but I felt it... I did not, I represented myself, and, but I felt it was my duty. And I, and we came to a resolution because the judge discussed it with me, and I was there, I did not have an attorney, and I felt the best thing to do was to take, was to sit and come up with a statement that was, that talked about what happened. I did try to talk to Mr. Biancamano, because I did hear the same items announced at a forum, at the council, what is it called, debate? And I actually yelled out, which I'm still a little embarrassed about, that it was untrue, and it was done by his running mate. And I know Ms. Sobolov approached him after that, and then the flyer came out, and I just felt that it was completely inappropriate. So, that's why I did it. I'm sorry that it's cost us some money, but I felt that I needed to do it, because it's part of my job as, as an elected person. So, but with that, I do abstain, but I thought I would tell everyone.
Motion carries five affirmative votes.
Okay, so now we are up to the final public comments. How many, Tom?
We have seven looks. Well, we removed one, so we have six, yes.
Six, okay, so call the first, this is three minutes.
First speaker is Ms. Waiters.
I believe she left.
Second is Tommy LaCasey.
Good evening, thank you, President, Madam President, Board. Some of you know me, that's the security guard downstairs, and I'm the smiling face that allows you to go upstairs and see Dr. Bracow and Dr. Hernandez. I'm here today representing the American Cancer Society Relay for Life, that's held on PRA on May 16th, 2015. As some of you know, I have talked to you a few times about this, cancer has affected me personally, I'm sure it's affected some family members, and some of your friends on the board. But for me personally, I lost my dad to colon cancer 22 years ago, and eight years ago, seven years ago, I lost my wife to lung cancer. And after I lost my wife, me and my daughter decided to get involved with the relay. And we've been involved with that for over seven years, coming on our seventh year now. And being now a member of the Board of Education in some capacity, we wanted to get the education out to students and parents involved in the community. So what's, what's going on is, we call this the ABC program, it's Art Beating Cancer. It's a school luminary project, Relay Your Life for Hoboken. And what is Art Beating Cancer? The Art Beating Cancer Program is a way to involve students and their families in Relay for Life, a signature American Cancer Society fundraising event that represents the hope that those lost to cancer will never be forgotten, that those who face cancer will be supported, and one day, cancer will be eliminated. Why should schools participate in Art Beating Cancer? It encourages more youth participation for a great cause, and brings this community awareness about relay. Plus, parents love to see their children's artwork on display on this, on this day. So with that, I'm going to give you the event director and the community manager, Ms. Megan Tompkins.
Thank you. What we're asking for, for the ABCs of- What we're asking for, the ABCs of cancer, is to give the students a white paper bag like this, that they can take home and then decorate in honor or in memory of somebody that, and their friends or family that they might have lost. They would bring this bag back to school with a small nominal monetary donation that would go to the American Cancer Society. I have a finished one here, is what they would look like. They are presented May 16th at PRA. We have a ceremony at around 9:30 at night when it's dark, where we light them with a candle on the inside, and we take a minute, we do a silent lap and really remember those who have battled this disease. So it's one of the things that we're presenting in order to raise money for the American Cancer Society. The money that we do raise goes to our programs and services. We provide free wigs for those that are going through chemotherapy. We provide makeup, any Look Good Feel Better program teaches women who are going through chemotherapy how to put on their eyebrows. We provide free transportation to and from your chemotherapy treatment if your friends and family are possibly working at the time and you need to support your families that way. So, the programs and service that we do comes from money from programs like this, and we just love the opportunity to really bring a community, get together, and in the fight against cancer, to honor our survivors and to grieve those that are no longer with us. Thank you.
Thank you. I know that everyone on the board is feeling this way. Dr. Bracow, you know, put our, let's see about doing it, I think it'd be a lovely tribute for our children and to support our employee.
Does she have a flyer? I see you have a-
Yeah, so, next speaker?
Right, your name is Megan? Okay, thank you. Sarah Raynor is next.
Hi, Sarah Raynor, 1000 Jefferson Street, and PTO president of Hoboken Junior/Senior High School. I apologize, I might start hacking along. So, I've learned a lot this evening, and one thing I have overwhelmingly realized is that I never want to be on the Board of Ed, you guys. You look miserable, and you're not miserable people, but you look, you can just tell how difficult this decision has been. It is divisive in the fact that I am friends with many people that are in the audience tonight, and I also bashed the public school system in Hoboken while my daughter, who is now a freshman, a happy freshman at Hoboken High School, while my daughter was going to other schools in town. And I didn't know why I was doing it, but I did it. And, talk about taking a second look at these things, I was so wrong, and I was actually thinking as well that the energy from the parents that were here tonight would be so great to have at our junior high and to have included in the PTO. I do look forward to bridging some gaps and some bridges with, with people at Ola, with parents at Ola, because I do believe that we're all in here for one thing, and that's for our kids, and that's, that's what's the best. One, one personal story, though, my son is two and a half, and I have a daughter who's 14, and he can't, he's not allowed to go to school, right? But yet, he was included in that data. So that's something that I think that people really need to understand and see that, you know, that's that. While I'm here, the PTO is having our first major fundraiser, which is going to be next Wednesday, April 22nd, at Panera on Washington Street, from 4:00 to 8:00 PM, so I encourage everyone to come out. We're still selling our T-shirts for another week, and as Irene mentioned earlier, Shrek Movie Night is this coming Friday, pizza at 5:00 o'clock and movie at 6:00, so hopefully everyone will come. We had a great showing for Frozen, so it'd be great to have everyone out there for Shrek as well. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker?
Next speaker is Melissa Shepherd.
Ms. Shepherd?
Hi, Melissa Shepherd, 1333 Hudson Street. Unfortunately, I didn't read through the whole agenda when I put my name on the general list, but I do want to address the item that has the resignation of Mr. Bowley. My son attends Wallace, and I am very familiar with Mr. Bowley, and I feel very familiar with his strengths and his weaknesses. The one thing that you cannot deny is that he is the hardest working person we have in our district. He loves the kids. He just has a way about him that the kids respond to, the staff. You know, he's not from around here, he's not like Hoboken born and bred, and he is able to bridge any sort of cultural divides that he's come across. Selfishly, he has done a lot for my son, and I feel that he's been very generous with his time, and he considers every child individually. Do I think he could improve in certain ways? Do I disappointed at aspects of our school? Am I disappointed in the level of communication? Do I know who to lay the blame with exactly on that front? I do feel a little blindsided by finding that agenda item. I'm a pretty involved parent. I can't always be on top of all the information, but I feel a little blindsided by the fact that that was in there, and I sort of had no clue that that was happening. I spoke to Mr. Bowley today, and quite honestly, he looked very down. I've never seen him down, so that what, that did strike me, but I had no idea what that was about. I would ask you to reconsider that particular item, and maybe try to come up with an alternative than just accepting his resignation. Of course, I don't know all of what's behind the scenes, or if there are really strong issues there, but from my perspective, as I said, he's extremely hardworking, he's caring, he is someone who unites people in the community, and it's emotional. Just as it's emotional for all the parents here, for the variety of issues that they've brought up. While I see the board's opinion is valid, and I see all of your reasoning behind supporting a continuation of the lawsuit, and I do see it as a financial issue, as Ms. Angley pointed out, and I do want every dollar to stay with the district kids. It's not about money for them, it's personal. So I just think we need to think about it in those terms. It's not always just a financial issue, even if you have the cold, hard facts there, it's also political capital, goodwill that you can sow in the community. The decision has been made, so my recommendation would be that we also present to the public, especially the district parents, what your contingency plan is for if they continue to win in the appeals process. Can we figure out other ways to raise the money? I'll be the first volunteer. Can we get more computers in our school? Can we boost our own foreign language and Spanish language learning? Can we boost our arts program? Our STEM learning, you name it. Those are issues that the parents I know care about most, and I think we have to be proactive and not just reactive. And it's all about, as I've said before, perception. It may not be reality, but the perception is that we may be spending too much energy on one avenue of increasing aid in our district and bettering our school, and I want to start helping in other ways, and I just ask you to consider that as you move forward, and to try, no matter how emotional things get, to keep it on a very professional level, because you, above all, you represent us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Sheila Delaire.
Sheila Delaire, 1000 Hudson Street. I just have an update and some, some comments, too. The autism fundraiser ride was amazing, and I wanted to give you all an update. So we were able to raise money for the Global Autism Project and the ABA Project at Wallace. We raised a little bit over $5,000, which is pretty good, yeah, thank you. So, I'm here today to just thank you, you know, whoever came and whoever's going to watch this, thank you so much for your support and for your dedication, so we're going to keep working on fundraising for this, for this awesome program. In addition to that, I just wanted to give some updates. So April is Autism Awareness Month, right? April 2nd, we, Hoboken Special Needs Parents Group and the Wallace PTO, we got together, and all of our district schools, all the kids wore blue shirts in honor for this day, which was great, and we were able to raise a little bit more money for the Wallace ABA as well, just to raise awareness. And then, one more thing on the week of the 20th, this April 20th, Mark, myself and Mark Matone, we're going to work with our schools, our district schools, and go into the, into the classrooms and talk to kids about what is autism, raising awareness, talk a little bit about bullying and those kind of issues, just kind of to wrap up this, this really, you know, this great month of autism awareness. So, anyway, so thank you for, everybody for your support. In addition to that, I just, just to piggyback off of that, you know, what this prior speaker was talking about, I didn't get a chance to read the whole agenda, so sorry about that, but I did see that about, about Mr. Bowley, and I don't really know, I don't know behind the scenes, I don't know, I don't know what it was, right? But he is, and I will reiterate, and I sound like a broken record, but he is just, he's an amazing principal, he's been so good with me, with my son, and I guess I just, I want to know what happened, what's going on, because I was, I was also really blindsided, and he hasn't said anything to me, and I met with him about other things, so we just, you know, we just don't know, so I'm just a little kind of concerned. And, and that's it, so thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle.
That's it, that was the last speaker.
Okay, any additional comments by board members before we close?
I would, very quickly, there was a few residents that came up discussing Mr. Bowley leaving, and one thing that we have to understand is, it is a personnel matter, and we can't talk about it here. All we, all we could tell you is what was on the agenda, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Fabian, is that he submitted his resignation. I don't know when other information can be released to the public, but it probably can't be released.
The board can't discuss the personnel issue.
Correct.
The public was allowed to discuss it.
Correct, okay. So I just wanted to make that clear, and I want to welcome Dr. Johnson again.
Thank you for making that point, Peter, and just to remind that those decisions are, are not board decisions, that what happens with personnel is an administrative decision that they present to us in, in committee, and as a general rule, you, you follow the advice of the educational leader. So with that, can I have a motion to close?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.